All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 PM on November 8th, 2021. All members of the planning board being present call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes. We have none this evening, so none for that. Moving on to Agenda Item B, committee reports, administrative actions. Are there any committee reports any of the members wish to make at this time?
None from me.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
All right, we're good right now. Town planter's a report. The town planner is not here this evening, so we have no report for that. And Agenda Item B 3, 725 Main Street, nonsubstantial change determination.
What do you want to do with the bylaw? No. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cuco representing the applicant. When we were here last week, there was brought up about the waiver for Section 5413 as a nonsubstantial change. I think the board had already, they voted to waive the fee on that, filing fee on that. And if you, I just, going back through my notes from way back when, and the trees that the planner was talking about, those ornamental trees that are on the side of the building, we didn't have the shade trees that were in the parking lot because it's heavily wooded between us and your butter, so. But in order to make the record clear, I believe, Mr. Johnson asked us to come in and file for it so that the record will reflect what you folks had voted on at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cuco. Just to make a note of it, do you know what the height is presently?
About eight feet.
Eight feet.
Oh, it is eight feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so they were planted at less than and now have already reached eight feet?
Well, no, it's just that the, what the bylaw says is that the shade trees that are park near is have to be 12 feet. It doesn't say that any other ornamental trees have to be 12 feet. But rather than get into, you know, are they ornamental or shade trees, we just ask for the waiver. And as, I think as you stated, Mr. Chairman, you always have the right to review the landscaping should it fall into disrepair or lack of what you had originally intended.
Okay, all right. Mr. Ryder?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Fowler?
All set.
Mr. Delaney?
All set.
Anything? We're good?
Well, I just, we have, we have an email.
A couple of things.
You guys all have received the same emails I have, right? The Anna McGinty email, all right, says that it should be 6544, not 5413. I want to get a clarification on that, that's all.
That's it?
So which one is it?
It's eight feet.
No, that isn't the number, so.
No, I think the number where, what she's saying is it should be 5414 and we put on the application 5413. So I didn't see that email, but.
She says 5444, yes.
5444.
Should be the, should be the bylaw.
Okay.
Okay, not 5413.
All right, well, I would yield to the planner for that change.
Okay. So for point of clarification, shall we use the 5444?
Yes, at her request.
At her request, right.
It's in her memo, so we'll use that.
Thank you, I didn't see that memo.
Yeah, we have, the planning board has it, so.
It's internal.
Yeah, so I mean, and if that's the case, fine. Other than that, I have no questions, I'm all set.
All right. What is the pleasure of the board as to whether or not this is a nonsubstantial change first? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
All right, so motion, this is a nonsubstantial change. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And now as to the actual nonsubstantial change itself, do we have a motion?
Make a motion and, oh.
Good. Mr. Fowler?
Moved.
Okay, so Mr. Fowler's made the motion to grant the, and the, we're going to be using the 5444.
That's it, yep.
And Mr. Fowler's made the motion to grant the nonsubstantial change as submitted and noted with the 5444. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, all set.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing that memo forward.
No problem. I was probably aware you didn't get that memo, so.
Yeah.
To bring it so that we're both on the same page, which is why I brought her up.
Yeah, that's why I said.
You know, the site looks great, just the way it is, so.
All right, so before we start the, the main hearings, I'll just let everybody know, Agenda Item D, 1768 and 1788 Main Street, this application, this hearing has been asked to be continued by the applicant to our 1213 meeting, so there won't be anything on that tonight, so if anybody is either here for it or at home listening or waiting to hear about it, nothing will be discussed on it this evening. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item C, which is 1058 Chandler Street, family suite special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Motion made in seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Sir, if you want to come on up and state your name and address for the record, then, excuse me, the floor is yours.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Gordon Schneper. I'm at 1058 Chandler Street, and what we're proposing is an addition onto our house that will help expand it, so my daughter and two grandsons have been living with us for two years now, and we decided that the boys have gotten old enough that they really need their own bedrooms, so.
So moved.
And the variance that we're looking at is that because the addition will have two bedrooms up above, we're having a, it effectively becomes a net of one bedroom, because the bedroom they're currently, they're both currently in, will be, you know, destroyed, will become the hallway to the other two bedrooms to the addition. So each boy will get their bedroom, we get master suite out of it, as well as a two-car garage.
There you go. It's always a plus.
Mr. Ryder?
The master suite is the plus.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fowler?
I'm all set.
Mr. Delaney?
I am all set.
Mr. Fritsaya?
Well, you guys are putting all the pressure on me.
I gave everybody else a chance.
All right, you're all set.
So my question, looking at the plans, and you guys will probably verify this, for the majority of the family suites that we've done, all right, is there a kitchen involved?
Yeah.
Well, this family suite has no kitchen, right?
Yeah, the kitchen is, will be in the current, will remain the same.
So there'll be one kitchen. So I guess my question to you is, why is it not just a straight addition rather than a family suite request? Because there's no kitchen to make a second unit, being independently, independently sectioned.
Actually, I think, hold on a second, it's the bedroom count. It's the number of bedrooms.
Who goes on the bedroom count?
Is triggering it.
Right.
Okay. Because of a septic or, no, right?
No, or on sewer.
It's just the number.
Yeah, it's just that we're having to, instead of the one bedroom that the bylaws allow.
Because, to be honest with you, this is the first time we've had a family suite come in without a kitchen in its own separate entity as the unit. Not just an addition like you're doing with the two bedrooms, actually, in reality, it's one bedroom in the garage, in the larger suite for yourself, but. So that was my question. I don't know if any other board members have any, any questions on that or how.
I thought the same thing, in my understanding, I mean, a little bit, it was a bedroom, but.
Yeah, I think it's the total number, even though it's not, even though, one of the bedrooms going away, becoming the hall, but then the total count, I thought was what was true.
You can have any amount of bedrooms in a house.
Right.
As long as you have a septic system to accept that. So bedrooms has nothing to do with it.
You're on sewer, so, I mean, that's, that was my, that would puzzle me, so that's.
No, my impression was that the bylaws only allow for one bedroom above on an addition, the way with the two-story.
If it was a family, if it was an in-law apartment.
I think it may have been.
And then you'd have to have a kitchen.
Probably the way it's, it was explained, he's putting on for family, it probably just translated, let's follow this process for the family suite, but I agree, if the bedroom doesn't trigger it, it's just a standard addition. It meets all the other guidelines.
If that's the case, when he gets back to the building department, they could just say, it's not necessary to do this as a family suite, just file it as an addition, so I don't think there's any harm, because if there's an issue with it, the building inspector's going to stop it anyways.
Yeah.
So I'd rather let them get the chance to be able to get there and let them tell.
Mr. Chairman, the other issue is, on all the other family suites, is there, is there an affidavit involved as far as who is going to be living in that family suite? So in most cases, it'd be someone's father-in-law or mother-in-law and so forth, and they're occupying the family suite, and then the other family starts occupying that, and it's supposed to be a yearly thing where you, you renew the affidavit saying that what could just.
Underline's supposed to be.
Huh?
Underline's supposed to be.
Well, it's supposed to be, right, but that's usually the process. So you just sign the affidavit, you know, Mr. Smith or living here with their daughter, Mr. Mr. Jones, whatever, so. So I don't know if that's going to trigger an issue as well.
No, only if it continues through as a family suite. If it turns out when they get there.
And I'm all favored, and I'm all in favor of it, of what you're trying to do, and it makes, makes sense. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, scenario.
But if they continue through the process, then they follow all the rules, but if he gets to the building inspector and the building inspector recommends going a different route, then it won't matter.
Yep.
So I mean, we're only approving that he can try, it's always the building inspector who tells you whether you can.
And you're also looking for a setback waiver, correct?
Well, the setback issue, yes.
Because it's too close to the neighborhood next door, it's right?
Yeah, we work instead of like one quarter, for some reason, when they built the house, it's not parallel to Chandler Street. I have no idea why. And so it ends up when we expand it for the two-car garage and the addition on top, the, we come within, I think, one, one side of it comes within, I think, I just got the plot plan from the surveyor with the addition on it, it's 10.6 feet instead of 15. So we're going to have to go through the zoning board of appeals for that as well.
Okay. All right, because I read that in the notes as well, and I'm like, all right, it's, all right, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, so I'll let my other board member speak if they have any other questions or concerns.
Have you talked to the building inspector yet?
Not the building inspector.
Have you talked to the girls in the office?
I talked to the people in the office, yes.
And did they see this, did they see that there was only one bedroom? I mean, one kitchen? Did you note it to them?
I did not. I don't know whether they saw that or not.
All right. Dawn's been out, right? Dawn's been out of work for about a week and a half, maybe two weeks?
No, she was on a honeymoon the first week.
And her mother died as well, right? So.
It was three weeks ago.
But also, we have Ms. McGinty commenting here, typically, if there's something that's, an error in the application, it's usually where she notes it, and she didn't note anything that there was an issue with this coming to us, so. I mean, we can do what we want, but I'd recommend just, we approve it, if it gets stopped at the building inspector's office, that's, that's a different issue. This is just us saying, provided the family suite permit is in order, they can move forward, but it's going to be ultimately up to the building inspector.
I think we have to have a caveat if we make a motion, because we know we're not making a legal in-law or family suite, because it doesn't have a kitchen.
I'm wondering.
It's just an addition.
I'm wondering if it has to do with the setback.
That's what we're trying to tell them to do.
But that's, the setback would fall on the zone.
But he hasn't done it.
Well, that's, I mean, it's the zoning board of appeals, that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah, so we're in a quandary here, sir, so not.
Okay.
But, you know, for the record, I am all in favor of family suites and what you're trying to do, I just want to make sure we're doing the right cross our teeth and dark our eyes.
But this is my, this is my other reason though, is that if we, if we've approved a family suite in the past and it gets to the building inspector and there's some defect, it's stopped at the building inspector's office, if we don't do this tonight to give them the ability, we're talking about a full month with all the missed meetings we're going to have coming up before they can even come back in here. So I just assume, if we, unless we have a huge problem with this, that we approve the ability to do the family suite, just the approval of it, it's the, whether they get the authorization comes out of the building inspector's office.
I can't vote on that. I can't vote for that.
Okay.
Because it's not a family suite.
So my question to you is, is there a date for your zoning board of appeals hearing?
I don't have one yet. I was, I spoke with the women, I forget whether it was Alex or the town, you know, town planner, one or both of them, that they said that it didn't matter which order I did the, looked at the, for the variance, for, you know, for the variance for the bedrooms or the variance for the, for the zoning board of, zoning board of appeals for the side setback issue. What they said was to bring in the plot plan with the showing the addition, it will go in front of the building inspector who says, basically will say, no, you have to go through the zoning board of appeals because of the side setback.
Right. Yeah, you would think that if the board, if the zoning board of appeals says no, then you have to revise your plans.
Yes.
So I mean, now we're back to square one and not having our approval either.
I just find it, I mean, I just think it's strange that Ms. McGinty provided us a review of the application and made no note that the fact that it didn't have it was a fatal flaw. I guess.
It's almost, I'd like to say what we could act on this subject to, the petitioner going to the building inspector's office and asking if, are you going to approve this if I don't have a second kitchen in it as a family suite? You have to put the cards on the table, in other words.
Okay.
And if he says yes, you can take our vote and go with it. If he says no, you don't have our vote.
Can it go, can we do a conditional?
Yeah, that's my say.
Yeah, I think a conditional, if, if the building commissioner deems it's a family suite and we vote to approve, then it follows the family suite and still meeting the guidelines, and then it has to go to the zoning board of appeal. If he deems that it's just an addition, it would fall under the building inspector anyways and our vote wouldn't mean anything. Correct?
Okay, we can, we can write it up there, yeah.
I think that's, I don't want to hold him up, because it's probably going to be a month time by the time you go to ZBA.
Right.
Easy, and then if, if for something changes.
But it's got to be, if you go to the zoning board of appeals, it's got to be advertised in the newspaper and so forth and so on, so now you're talking week upon weeks upon weeks to get an advertised place and then, and then an appointment.
So I mean, we're basically saying the same thing, just we're going to have it written in this time.
Deadline for submitting the application.
Because they're always subject to the building inspector proving, but this time we're going to say it specifically.
So this is why I've gotten the plot plan.
All right, that's fine.
With the addition of all that.
Let's just, just.
That's my next step.
We have two conversations here.
Let me just put it out to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, now I'll bring it back to the board. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I would suggest, as Mr. Ryder seconded my thought, was to do a conditional approval for this if the gentleman gets a, the okay from the building inspector to approve this from his viewpoint as a family suite.
Okay. All right, so then if, if we're going to do that, that'll ultimately become the motion, but if that's the case, then we need to close the public hearing.
Right.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I didn't want to close until we.
Right, no, I know, like, but if that's, yeah.
Yeah, motion to close.
Okay, so I have a motion to close, do I have a second? Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now as to the motion on the family suite special permit.
What did I say?
So we have Mr. Fowler's motion to grant, to grant the family suite special permit conditioned on receiving the building inspector's sign-off certification that it is in fact a family suite.
Right.
And upon that sign-off, then we're all set, otherwise our, our approval is void.
You have, if, I want to ask the gentleman a question. Do you have the ability to go there during the day, or do you have to?
To, the building inspector?
Yes, I mean, I don't know if you work.
No, I'm retired.
Okay, well, that's good. Good for you.
Yes, Ms. McGinty has said that what we have to do, like I said, is go through the zoning board of appeals for the second part, but the first part of that is going in front of the building inspector, you know, which is not for the family suite, it's for the side setback, but I would guess that he would also make a ruling on that.
When could you go there?
What, no, I will be going to the zoning board of appeals.
No, no, see the building inspector.
I don't have anything planned, I don't have, I don't have the official plot plan yet with the showing the addition.
Okay, we don't need that for what I want to do there.
Okay.
I would go in and explain it to the building inspector.
So I think, well, just so, just so we can, just so we can finish this part up, just so we're, so Mr. Fowler has motion, is pending, a second.
I'll second, sure.
All right, motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, so this is, this is conditionally approved at this point.
Okay.
So what Mr. Fowler was just recommending is, take what you have right now, what you gave us, bring that to the building inspector's office and meet with the building inspector so that you can confirm that this is in fact a family suite, a proper family suite.
Application.
Application, so you can move forward, because otherwise our approval becomes void if the building inspector deems that this is not a family suite.
Right, okay.
Okay? So that's what you got from us this evening.
Okay.
You basically got the ability to try the next step.
Okay.
I would suggest, and I think Mr. Fowler was making the suggestion, is that you go do that first, otherwise you're going to be wasting your time with the zoning board of appeals, because you might be going there with nothing yet. You know what I mean? If you determine that that's, that this is, if you find out from the building inspector this is not in fact a family suite, then you'd be going to the, the zoning board of appeals with nothing, is my point. So I would speak to the building inspector first to confirm that this is the correct way to go about this.
Okay.
Okay?
But you haven't granted a conditional family suite by us, so.
Okay, so our part's done for now. Where you go from near here, our suggestion is you go confirm this with the building inspector before you make your next step. Okay?
All right. All right. Congrats.
All right.
Good luck.
The only reason I ask if you could go tomorrow or at the latest Wednesday, I won't be here for a while to go there, and not that you need me, but I think, I thought it would make it easier for you if someone from here went with you, because I go in the office all the time anyway, so it's no big deal. So it's up to you.
Yeah, like, you know, I can go tomorrow.
Okay.
I have a, I have a tentative plot plan, I don't think it's stamped.
Yeah, but see, the plot plan's not necessary for this.
For that part?
For this.
For this part.
The plans, yeah.
What you gave us would be enough to get the answer you need from the building inspector for our part.
Okay.
The rest of it is something different, just on the family suite part, the information you gave us should be enough to get the answer you need, at least on that portion.
Right. So I'm guessing it might have been an oversight, but, you know, hopefully not.
Nine o'clock?
Okay.
Nine, all right for you?
Nine o'clock? Yes.
Okay, I'll see you downstairs.
Okay.
All right, okay.
And he'll get you in.
All right, so you're all set with us for now, so good luck with that.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item D, which is 1768 and 1788 Main Street, which is continued from our 1025 meeting. As mentioned earlier, the applicant has requested to continue to our December 13th meeting, so can I have a motion to continue this to 710 on December 13th, 2021?
You got a court here.
Go move.
Is that the court you're looking for?
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. It's continued.
I got, all right.
Yeah, moving on to Agenda Item E, 30 East Street. This is continued from our 1025 meeting as well. If you could just state your names to the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dennis Greci, I'm an engineer with Andover Consultants with an office at 1 East River Place in Methuen. Also here tonight is Jerry Welch with Carolina Properties, the builder developer of the property. So we're here this evening, we've made a few changes, or we've submitted a revised conceptual layout plan for the board's consideration, showing a potential visitor parking space. We've also identified a location of a sign that will sit out front, and we did speak with the postmaster yesterday, or Friday, excuse me, and we, we understand where he wants us to put the, the post box, so we'll be adding that to the plan that will be revised. We also received comments from the engineer this morning, those were forwarded by Alex Louder, so we have those and we've read through them, we understand what, what we need to do, and we're hoping to revise the plans and submit final stamp plans within the next week or so, so early next week at the latest. On the board, on my laptop here, I have a color rendering that was prepared by the applicant showing what the building will look like generally and how the configuration of the parking garages will lay out. We thought this might be helpful for the board to, to envision how these cars will be pulling in and then backing out of these different parking spaces or different garage spaces. The, again, the sidewalk leading to the back unit, so we did add, in the last iteration, we added some additional parking space, actually pavement area here, which will be striped as no parking, again, to allow for these occupants to back out and then get down to East Street. I have a couple other slides here, so this is from the assessing department, this kind of shows what, again, what the existing building is listed as, it's listed as a three-family building currently.
Mm-hmm.
I know that came up, I believe the chairman was, requested that information, so that we did just pull that up from the assessing department this afternoon. Again, this was submitted to the, to the board, again, showing a potential visitor parking space. Now with the addition of that parallel parking space, we will be sacrificing some snow storage. We did discuss at the last meeting that the, the applicant is certainly agreeable to a condition that the homeowners association would be required to remove snow in excess of, you know, a certain amount of inches. We've also identified a post sign here, again, this sign would be six feet from the property line in a landscaped area here in front of the professional office building. Again, this is just a rendering of the sign, the applicant prepared, Briggs Place, identifying the, the name of the development and the address, 30 East Street. So again, not a large sign, but just something that people know where they are and where they're visiting. And again, these are the plans that we looked at last time, so again, this would be the, you know, an area of a potential parking space. We are looking for some input from the board if, if they think that that's appropriate to add that additional space there, to give a, you know, a visitor to the office, to the units in the rear, a potential place to park, we can certainly add that in and we can fold that into our, the final set of revised plans that will also incorporate the engineering department comments. I think that's it for right now, so if the board has any questions, we will be happy to answer those.
All right. Start with Mr. Fritsaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of comments, I just seen the slide on the, that you're being taxed as a three-family, correct? What, is there an occupancy of a three-family?
Mr. Welch might be able to speak more to that, but it's, it's being taxed as a three-family.
Certificate on file for occupancy? I mean, was there a certificate on file for occupancy?
Oh, I, um, I don't know. We didn't check that. The owners, the holdings verified that it was three-family for a long time, so I don't know.
I'll just give you an example. I've just sold a piece of property in Charlestown that was taxed as a three-family, three meters, electric meters, three gas meters, but there was no certificate of occupancy on file. It held up the sale of the property until the building inspector was able to come out to view the property, notified that there was three mailboxes, three meters, three floors, three utilities for Edison, Boston Edison or whatever, and three kitchens. So that's only, that's the only reason they allowed my property to be go forward for sale because now I have a certificate of occupancy from the building department. So, you know, I don't know if that's the case.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
Tons for you or not, but...
I don't know the answer to that question. I know he said there was about 10, 10 to 12 people living there at some point. I remember the chairman asked that question.
But at present, I'm sorry, there's no one in there now.
It's actually, pretty much, it's not officially condemned, but you couldn't, it's kind of dangerous. The roof's all caving in.
Yeah. So it's not habitable.
It's not habitable.
Okay. So, so I see you added the parking spot there for visitors. I just don't know if that's enough for you. I mean, for, for me, as far as a board member. So looking at the site over the weekend, I went down again and I'm like, okay, if I can't park in the development, where do I park? You're not parking on East Street. You're not parking on Main Street, at least in the close proximity to the property. You may be parking in the church parking lot, which is a private property entity. I mean, the closest spot is probably over near North Street or up North Street a little ways, so, you know. I know you may have tried to satisfy us as far as a visitor parking, but I just don't know if that's sufficient or not. I'll listen to my board members as far as, you know, their comments or their concerns or whether I'm off the wall as far as, you know, the need for a visitor parking spot there, or more than one anyway, but... Because I've just visioned a possibility of if, you know, the owner of the business property with a secretary on board, there's two cars and a couple of visitors that come for business there. I mean, where are they going to park? I mean, they're going to be parking in, on the designated parking spot, probably far one of the residents that are living there, so I just... I don't, that's my hangup. I mean, I'm not against the entire project. I try to be reasonable in my, in my, in my review of it and, you know, just looking for that scenario to be resolved maybe a little bit better if you can. I don't know whether it's redesigning the entire back of it or not, but, you know, that's, that's a hangup I have right now, but, um... Where are we with Mr. Hardeman's comments? Have we resolved all of those comments?
We received the memo this morning from Mr. Hardeman, so we're working on responding to those comments and issuing a final set of revised stamp plans hopefully this week or early next week.
All right, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a, a thought. I, to make this work, I'm not sure if you like this, but to make this work, I'm not going to reduce anything. I'm not going to tell you to flop off one apartment and add two more parking spaces because you can't add any more spaces, but I think you should, in the area where you have four spaces, four parking spaces, I think you should allocate one of those, three of those spaces for unit one, two, and three in that building. So in other words, people will know, that's the second, say, you have two cars. The only place they can park is in the garage. They can't park behind the garage because it'd be blocking traffic. So if one of those four spaces is going to be for them, then they should be, there should be a sign, apartment one or two or three or ABC, however you want to do it. But that way, someone's parked there that shouldn't be there? Because you're just going to have a lot of arguments and a lot of people, and you don't want people parking behind the garage doors for the simple reason of what I said before. That would take care of that problem, as long as everybody stays on the up and up. Where they're going to park if they have a guest? It almost, you have, you need, what, nine spaces for the units? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's two per unit and 300 square feet of office space.
Right. And how many do you have?
We're showing 10 spaces on this.
Plus the visitors.
Right, so plus, we're showing 10 spaces plus this potential space would be an extra one.
Yeah.
It's 11.
So that means, so that's 11, so... I'm sure at night, someone comes in, they want to park, you're not going to have any visitors at the office that would need that space, so that would go unused. So that could be, just put a visitor sign there.
Well, that's a good idea. I live at Anne's Pond and there's numbered spots.
Yes.
And everybody seems to adhere to it.
Yeah. Yep.
Building number and a dash and like four, 114.
Correct. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea, Mr. Fowler.
In that way, it's not only, the homeowner that's living there, who should know it eventually, but someone visiting them, they won't know. So that should end that glum and make me feel more comfortable giving you an approval. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rider.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm a bit concerned of taking away snow storage to put in parking. I just feel that the best plans don't work. They, you know, snow plans, you know, plow's coming at usually early 4, 5 o'clock in the morning. Where's he going to put the snow? If there's four cars, if there's people parked in those four spots, he's not tucking the snow straight in. He's, and there's a car in this visitor spot, so you, you need to take all of the snow from this entire parcel and tuck it into that right side. The only way to put snow on that, in your alternate snow storage, is if those four cars are not there. And the likelihood of nobody being there when the plows are coming, managing that's not going to be easy. It's just very tight in there. I'll agree with Mr. Fertaya. You're, you're trying to fit a lot into a small space. And believe me, I like, I like the look of it. I think it's, it's going to make, you know, the images, the renderings are great. I just think you're, you're trying to fit a lot into a little. And understanding winter, that snow storage to the right of the parcel, you know, on the right-hand side, is not going to handle the amount of snow. So ultimately, what happens at that point? The snow plow comes in and he pushes everything out onto East Street. It's 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, he pushes it out and goes down left and right of East Street. Because there's no way he's going to get in front of those four spots. And now by putting this other potential spot in there, you're eliminating, you know, another 160 square feet of snow storage. And you, I mean, they looked at trying to tuck it in the front, the opposite of your proposed sign, but now you're getting into your sightlines. I mean, I, I like Mr. Fowler's ideas of marking it, but I'm just concerned where we're going to put the snow.
Well, we could make that part of the contract from the HOA to hire the snow removal company that they use a skid steer or load that type of situation where you bring in a dump truck and a skid steer, and that's how you plow the park. Instead of using your stand.
I'm not, I'm not a pro. I think that's the only way to really manage it.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to do it.
And I think that's going to help.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can, you can make that part of the snow removal contract for the whole winter. You could make that, you know, part, part and parcel.
And, you know, we reserve the right too to bring them back in if there's a continued problem, if they dump it on the two corners or cause blind spots. I think really that's the only way to manage it.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. And that was worked with the skid steer and a small, maybe a six-wheeler, six-wheeler.
Absolutely.
Yeah, probably what we should do.
Yeah. If, if that's in the plan, I'm okay with it. I think, you know, and along with the recommendation of Mr. Fowler, marking each one of the spots for the units, you know, 1A, 1B, 1C, whatever it may be. And also, you know, you have the two front spots as a visitor after, you know, from 5:00 PM to 6:00 AM in the morning or whatnot. I think marking that and making sure, because ultimately you don't want a visitor of the back residential parking in there and now not giving the commercial space the adequate parking. So I think if that's business parking, Monday through Friday, you know, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM or whatever the business hours are, work with the business, and then after that it'd be visitor parking.
Yeah.
I think that would help alleviate some of the problems.
That's a good idea. So 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Sure. Or 7:00 to 5:00, and then after that window, you give those, you get two extra spots.
Monday through Friday.
Sure.
So, Mr., can I just get a clarification on, on your suggestion just now with the petition of, that is with keeping the extra?
Yes, keeping that.
Visitor spot, right?
Yeah, that extra visitor, no, keeping that extra visitor spot.
Yep.
And then just part of the snow management plan that it has to be removed off-site.
Okay. Nope, that's perfect. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that, that, because I'd like to see that one stay.
Oh, absolutely. No, I agree.
All right.
So, Mr. Rider, would it have to be so many inches of snow or something?
I think it's just, I think it has to be managed by... It's going to have to be managed. You're, you're only going to have, if you get a two-inch storm, they can push it and they can put it up there, but I think it's going to be on the, the onus is going to be on the management association or the contractor saying, I have no more place to put it. I have to get it out of there.
I think, I think, I think a combination of what, what's kind of gone, at least so far, that this is going to end up being one where we're going to... The only way this is going to work is with a lot more detail in these items than we would normally have. And they're going to have to be followed differently maybe than other projects that have a little more space for these things or access to this snow storage areas. And that is the only way this is going to work. So what, what I'll suggest, we're going to go to Mr. Delaney next, but what I'm going to suggest is that when you come in the next time, rather than us trying to invent the wheel, that you come in with a detailed write-up of what we just discussed and how you would have that, all those things. The, you know, the, the marking of spaces, the proposal for the snow.
Contract.
All of it. I think that would be ideal because I think there's no way this can go any further without that kind of detail for this site.
Sure. I would, I would go as far as put signage, you know, indicate signage for specific spots.
Yep.
The two, the visitor spots, no parking during business hours.
Right.
If you label that all out, that becomes part of the record and that's part of the management plan, and then I think it works. Because like I said, I think from the site, it, it's going to look nice.
Parking signage plan and the snow removal.
And detail, like the detail for all of it. Yeah, I think that's going to be, that's, that's going to make this, you know, bearable. You know, when we, when we, you know, because you get a account for, as Mr. Fertaya pointed out, you're dealing with a pretty narrow, you know, so this is, this is our best effort to try and work, you know, work with that. Okay. So, Mr. Rider, otherwise all set right now?
No, on that, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're up.
With the snow remove, like we're going to remove the snow. Are we eliminating the snow storage places?
No.
Or we're going to use them? Okay, because if, if we were going to remove the snow, it looked like we could squeeze in another parking space in front of the new potential one.
If I understand it correctly, the idea would be you still could use the snow storage area a little bit, but we're going to work with the idea that any significant amount of snow is going to have to get out of there. And that's how it'll work. So you still need the snow areas.
Okay. I'm all set.
All right. Okay, so for me, a lot of this is going to echo, because we kind of got to where I was hoping to get to on this because I like the extra space. I certainly like the idea of marking some of these spaces off because I think it's the only way it's going to work. And I, you know, discussed a little bit, but, you know, I'm, I'm loathe to tell you when you're providing more spaces than the book told you you needed to have, which was nine, that that's not enough. It's not the spaces. It's just your configuration of everything is what's jamming everybody up, I think, because you've certainly provided the number of spaces. We're just trying to make sure they're going to work in the real world. So that, I'm glad we've been able to figure out a way that we think that might be able to be done because you did provide what you were asked to and then a little. Just making it work in the real world with what I think we've got, got to a little bit tonight, which I think is going to be the most important thing. Other than that, I mean, you've got outstanding thing with engineering you're going to have to deal with. How do we feel about the sign information that we've gotten on that?
I think ultimately we're going to need, it's going to meet, it has to meet all the guidelines.
Right. So unless...
Size, height, but...
As long as what you've got there is meeting the normal size, then you're going to be fine, but, you know, that doesn't have the detail of if there's any light... I don't know. All I've got is what you've shown up here, so, you know, if it's meeting all the others, then you're going to be, you should be fine. But if there's anything that we were going to need to, okay, then, you know, we're going to need more detail than what we have there tonight. That really just gives us of where, not the what.
Yeah, the location of it doesn't appear when you sight it for any sight movement down to the right, so that's fine.
Excuse me, the sign, the sign, are they going to need a wave only like six feet from the street?
No, it's not.
If I'm looking at it correctly, proposed sign up there, it's six feet.
It is.
Six feet from the lot line.
From the line, yeah.
Not six feet.
Tough from the street.
Are they going to need a wave after that to? In other words...
We, yeah.
Is that on the list?
That's to mention, yeah.
I think it's already on the list. I think it's already on the list.
On the list, yeah.
It's on the previous.
We just have to finalize it.
So that's...
We just added this, we just added the sign location to this, to this sketch, so that it's a 10-foot front and I think 15-foot side setback for signage. So unfortunately, we, we can't accommodate anything other than this area here, so we're putting it at a six-foot setback.
So what I'd also like to see for the next time, when you come about that other detail, is you're revised, but the standalone waivers list. Because I know we had it on the plans before, but it's easier for us when we get it as a single sheet that we can then deal with when we get to that point. It's easier than trying to go back to the bigger plans and like find, you know, find all the, I mean, still noting them on the plan as, as you're supposed to, but for us, a separate list with the waivers makes it a lot, it also makes it easier on Ms. McGinty when we finally get eventually, hopefully, to a point where we're writing this whole thing up. It's just easier that way.
Chairman, I have one issue if I could.
Yes.
None of you guys mentioned it already, so, and it's the post office box. I know you mentioned about putting it somewhere, but I don't, you didn't say where.
Yeah, I met with the postmaster and he wants it right after the second parking spot on the right. He wants a, like a five gang, little pedestal mailbox.
Yeah.
The, yeah, community neighborhood.
CBU box it's called, with the, with the, um, what do you call it? Parcel lockers, it's incorporated in, it's all, the whole package, yeah. That's a good spot for you to come in, drive in. The only thing, you're going to have to pull in, the post office is going to have to pull in.
Back up.
In order to get out, so. And I don't think, I don't know if he's aware of that, but they, they don't, they frown upon trucks being, having to back up. Unless you can just do a circular U-turn when he gets in there and out, you know, so, but, which he might be able to, I don't know. No cars there. Great.
That works.
All right, so with that, I'll open up the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? As we know, there is no one in the audience.
Anyone?
Not always the most popular group, so... All right, so I'll bring it back to the board. Before I ask what the pleasure of the board is, I'll make the applicants aware of the following. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 29th. At this point, that meeting is most likely going to be canceled because we are not going to have enough members for quorum. So that being, that being that the next meeting would then be December 13th, that's our next scheduled meeting, at which point we suspect we should have a full board. So if we were to continue this to the 29th, it would be...
Continued anyway.
It would be, you know, it would just be for show. So I'm going to suggest that we simply continue this till the 13th of December. It should give you plenty of time to get everything done, get it in earlier, the better. So treat it like it's the 29th.
Yep.
For purposes of ours and the engineer, and then you can keep in the back of your mind, you're not coming here till the 13th. But please forget the 13th and think of the 29th.
Attorney would be able to make it.
Yeah, so...
And I think just...
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, because I was going to recommend that they not let Mr. Hardeman know that we're not coming back till the 13th of December.
Correct. I would treat this as the 29th.
Too late, he's going to hear this hearing.
Right, if you're going to make, make sure you just address all Mr. Hardeman's putting in all the information for the signage waiver, making sure it's all buttoned up, all those items and...
Yeah, the waivers, the conditions, and all the stuff you're looking for, so that it's a full package.
You, you know, you guys can only handle one side of that transaction, but if you're getting all your stuff in early,
Yep.
that's the pot that you can handle, you know, you have control over, but, you know, you drag that out into December and, you know, and then we're wondering why we haven't gotten things back, then, yeah, okay, so. All right, so then with that, I will entertain a motion to continue this to 7:15 on December 13th.
Subtle.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Motion made and seconded. All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you.
All right, good luck. Thank you.
Good luck, guys. Thank you.
Easy now.
What did he say?
Wow, Jay, wow.
He's trying to move on to the, his, his little break. All right.
We're leaving.
All right, any old business anyone wishes to discuss? Bearing none. Any new business? Bearing none. Correspondence, we have some correspondence in the packet. We have the, so everybody can see that ruling on the zoning bylaw decision and how that works, so we have that in there. Mr. Sadwick has added in a memo on sidewalks.
I, I, actually, I will, I'd like to...
You were right here when we were trying to figure out...
I'd like to come.
Oh, sure. I'm sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Rider?
Why are we receiving this?
So we sort of had an off, off-book conversation, and it, I think it comes out of a comment that was made at our last meeting. And this is an attempt to clarify that the funds for any of the projects at present do not, have not come from any of the funds the planning board has.
Who was meeting prior to that?
No, I understand. I just...
And the reason I did it because we were looking into it, for how much money was actually in our sidewalk account, if we were going to give it to the town, or how much we were going to give to the town, to at least finish one project, one sidewalk project. So that's where I thought we ended up. And I brought it up last week, the last meeting. And I think that's why we got the comment.
Okay. So apparently, according to that info, they have not requested, nor have we granted a release of any of the sidewalk funds since 2004.
Right. Mr. Chairman.
Not sure what that means, but...
They have requested.
Well, it got dropped, I said the same thing. I thought we did it, but it was requested and then it went a different route. And we never actually got to the point where we had to make a determination.
There was a request done. You know that and I know that. I think it was for $550,000 from our account to go towards Toshin Street.
Correct.
You know, but, but they got the funding from the town meeting so that it wasn't needed any longer. But the request was actually submitted, you know, and that was, Mr. Hardeman, I believe, was here for that.
Correct.
And we, I didn't have any problem with that. If, if we needed to use it, then fine.
I have one question on the sidewalks on Toshin Street. Has anybody been down there to take a look at what?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Why do we preach granite curves, granite curves, and we're putting in two minutes curves?
The can't, the cost.
Absolutely.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to...
It's, it's...
I do, I do remember Mr. Hardeman commenting it when, when he was in here discussing it with us.
You know, I, when I drive like the Indian Ridge County, and all the news is towards, towards...
I don't know if you looked at the sign when you drove into town?
Yes.
Tuckspur.
Oh, it's the gate.
Yeah.
It's the gateway that confuses me.
And then the only other piece in the correspondence is also from Mr. Sadwick. It's a summary of several different...
Court cases.
Court cases and decisions that play, I mean, I'm sorry, that are zoning, pertain to zoning, just for our, our review and note.
What did you get out of that? That we can't refuse medical marijuana distribution?
No, not necessarily. But there's more than that in there. There's, there's a whole bunch of decisions. That's just the one on the front.
I understand that. But as I read through it, I go, it's under the impression that medical marijuana distribution places, they're going to be put in.
I thought we didn't allow that in our town.
They don't lose in court.
No, we do.
We do.
We do.
Distribution? Sales?
Sales.
Sales.
Medical.
Medical.
Not, not, uh, retail.
Retail.
I'm recreational, sorry.
Recreation.
Yeah. One predated the other by quite a bit. So, all right. So with that, I will allow Mr. Delaney to do what he wanted to do just a few moments ago.
I'm making a motion to a church.
All right. A motion paid. Do I have a second? Motion paid in second. It all is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Good evening.